Justin.
Oh, good. All right.
And Kelly.
Good evening, everybody.
There's Kelly.
Welcome to the city council workshop for the city of Bonnie Lake for August 15th, 2023. First thing we do is salute our flag, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evan. Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLehman.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Do I hear a motion for Councilmember Evans?
So moved. Second.
All in favor of excusing Councilmember Evans from the workshop tonight, say aye.
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 Oh, thank you. All opposed? All right, let the record reflect, Councilmember Evans has been excused unanimously. So we do have a presentation from the Pierce County Library System. You're up.
You are up.
And we will, we will, shhh.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Gretchen Caserati. I'm the new executive director at the Pierce County Library System. I've had the opportunity to meet with some of you individually at the Bonnie Lake branch. And Erin, as I know you all know Erin, and I are here today as a part of a new process for the library. I'm beginning the process to go through our annual report once a year and meet with municipalities. We'll probably have to do an every other year cadence because there's a number of municipalities in Pierce County that we oversee through our libraries. And so today we wanted to be able to share with you a little bit about where we're at. One of our focus areas organizationally is on pandemic recovery and capacity building. This is a transition time where we have a lot of new leadership at the library. A very tumultuous process through the pandemic in so many ways impacted the library. And for myself, coming in as the new leader of the organization, kind of level setting and resetting as we move into building a future with new strategic planning and lots of aspirations for what the library can be in the future. So thank you for having us today and allowing us a few moments of your workshop to share some information. I believe it was a right click to advance or is it a scroll down? There it is. Okay, great. And we will leave time for questions, so we'll try to keep this moving expeditiously this evening. So for anyone who is watching online or for any of you here who may not know, the Pierce County Library System, it serves all the unincorporated areas or annexed municipalities in Pierce County. So we like to summarize it to say everything but Tacoma in Pierce County. Our service area is 2,000 square miles from Mount Rainier out to the Key Peninsula. We serve 655,000 people through our 19 physical branches across Pierce County. We are, in fact, the fourth largest library system in the state of Washington. Through our pandemic, we've, through our, through the pandemic, we have reallocated resources. And now through our electronic books, our digital collections, we have more than a million items in our overall collection. And we have an incredible circulation through our eBooks with lots of new folks who discovered the library virtually in the last couple of years. Here in Bonnie Lake, we serve 65,653 visitors in 2022, physical visits to our location, to the building, and that's the sixth most visited in our system last year. We continue to rebound as we bring back in-person programming and we bring back services that people were accustomed to before things shut down in 2020. We're continuing to see that upward trend of people returning to using the library physically as well as in our collections, digital and physical. With the library's purpose in providing materials, our mission statement is to bring the world of information and imagination to all people of our community. And we want to be the community's choice for the discovery and exchange of information and ideas. We have lofty ambitions to be the place where people can pursue learning, enjoying and connecting with their community, to live a full, healthy and fulfilling life, to be good citizens, engaged citizens of their communities, and to be healthy and productive.
Excuse me. Sadie, I, we're, the participants, the Zoom participants are not seeing the fine presentation that I know is in the packet. I'm done, thank you.
Is the audio okay? I'm not very close to the microphone.
The audio is fabulous. You're doing a great job.
I'm very loud for a librarian.
While we're waiting, do you know what the number one largest library system is in the state?
King County.
Oh, yeah.
Seattle and then... Can you see now?
See, we needed to see Erin. There she is in action, a librarian in the wild.
There she is.
I have my glasses, but no cardigan today, just a blazer. And no cats. I don't... Is it okay to proceed?
Councilmember McLehman, is there a right to go ahead?
Please, absolutely. That would be fabulous.
Thank you. The pages are in the packet, so if anyone missed the first few slides, they're informational and they are. So we were moving to, in our annual report in our finances, we are committed to being good stewards of public funds. While people think of libraries as nonprofits, we are indeed a government institution. We are a junior taxing district in the state of Washington. We have a board of trustees who oversees our finances, our policies, my, my performance. And, and so we want to be good stewards of those taxpayer resources. We are a service agency and probably not surprisingly, then in turn, about 70% of our expenses are in personnel. Our people are what make the library run. They are not just walls, buildings with stacks and stacks of books. It is our librarians, our staff in the branches that really make all the magic happen. 70% of our expenses, as I mentioned, are, are in our personnel costs. About 10% of our budget annually is our collections. That includes physical and digital. Technology, facilities and general operations make up the remaining 20%. We also do have a foundation. Our Friends of the Library support our local branches. Erin will speak about the Bonnie Lake Friends Group coming up. And we also have a foundation that privately raises a lot of money for the library each year for both operating and capital. And so we're grateful to the foundation for their efforts for operating costs as well as supporting our capital endeavors. I apologize, that's probably hard to read, but it is also included in the physical copies. And we'll make sure that those of you on council who are virtual have a print copy of that as well. We do keep our budget and financial information available on the website. And of course, as any government agency, we receive annual audits and appropriate oversight for, for our funding. Now, on to the fun and local information about the spectacular Bonnie Lake Library. It was built in 1982. We appreciate such a great partnership with the city of Bonnie Lake in our physical presence in this community, in our sharing of, of this civic use in this space. This library branch has 34,000 physical materials in the collection. As I mentioned, we have more than a million items in our collection. The system had nearly 5 million, what we call checkouts or CIRCs, in our business of items borrowed from the library last year. And in Bonnie Lake, that looks like just short of 200,000 from this physical location. We have almost, we have over 15,000 cardholders here in Bonnie Lake out of 200 and roughly 85,000 cardholders across the district. We have, as I mentioned, we're recovering with programs. So the system had 1,500, 1,600 programs last year and 58 of those were here. We will see those numbers increase next year. That was, I think, fall. We didn't bring programs back into the fall.
That was due to our renovation work this year.
Yes, that as well. So we know that those program numbers will increase both in number as well as attendance next year. Just to touch on a little bit of the system as well, we have three strategic priority areas, learning, enjoyment and community. That allows our organization to really focus strategically on delivering services around how people learn, what they're interested in learning. That could be learning to read for young people. That could be new job skills, upskilling to get a better job themselves, a new language, STEM or STEAM skills. We do after-school programming, learning how to use technology. I know the staff in all of our branches provide a lot of job support for people who are looking to apply for jobs, looking to improve their skills and, and move up in their careers. A second service area is enjoyment. We do believe that there's value in recreation and that learning through play is a really important skill for people of all ages. And in this area, we try to inspire imagination through extensive collections, diverse collections, to foster a love of reading and to create opportunities to discover new interests and pursue passions. I mentioned that we invested heavily in digital collections when everything had to go remote in 2020. And we surpassed 2 million checkouts just in our digital book collections. There are streaming audio, downloadable books. It's an app called Libby. Libby, if you're interested, we can show you after the meeting how to download books.
I love the Libby.
Great for your car.
Yeah, it is.
Hop on an audiobook.
It is.
And the third area, oh, excuse me, with, with that, under enjoyment is, is selecting books and material. And that's certainly a subject of conversation in national media around books and libraries collections. So I felt like it was appropriate to just share how the library selects materials for our collection. We serve a lot of people in this community across the county. And we are, as a part of our organizational structure, we really nest under the First Amendment. And we do want to serve all people through all their different interests. The idea of intellectual freedom is a very important and foundational principle for a public library, which is unique in the United States. That's a presentation for a different day. And that we really do want to help families find materials that are appropriate for their, for their families. So our librarians follow a policy that is set by the Board of Trustees, available on our website, that outlines the criteria of what we look for when we're selecting materials. Everything from artistic merit, popular interest, stylistic quality. Sometimes we look to fill holes in a collection. Maybe one branch doesn't have a lot of cookbooks. And so we know that we need to beef up the cookbooks or the DIY car auto mechanic collection. And so librarians will really look at each branch as well as the system as a whole to look for, do we have everything in a series? Do we have it in print? Do we have it in digital? And they'll look at a lot of different qualities. Those are all outlined in our policy. And we do have a clear process for how we manage those collections, whether things are coming in or how we manage things going out, as well as where they sit on our shelves. Recently, we did have our staff, I forget where it came from, but we know in the branches, there are also some pamphlets and brochures that can help parents to support their use of the library, to help them find materials that are of interest to them. And our staff are always willing, that's their expertise, is to help people find the right book for the right reader at the right time. Our third area is community. And that has been the hardest one for our library system, like so many organizations for the last couple of years, to really figure out how to do that in such an ever-changing and challenging environment, how to build community, how to be a part of the community. And so as we are coming out on this other end, with new leadership especially, I'm so pleased that, you know, an example of how we're attempting to embrace a new model of service is people like Erin coming to your meetings, being a part of the community. It's a practice called embedded librarianship, where we want to be a part of the community. It's the best way for us to build relationships. It's the best way for us to hear directly from people, what they're experiencing, what their needs are, what their interests and curiosities are, and building those relationships. So I think we're recovering and we're on our way in the right direction, but it certainly has been really difficult. We love to be a part of community events. We're so glad to see those things are coming back into our communities and that our staff are ready and eager to be a part of those activities. And here I get to turn the microphone over to Erin, who will talk a little bit more about the branch.
Right, so I get to talk about some of the fun stuff. The first topic, you heard me come to you this fall and winter and talk a little bit about the renovation. I feel like I've talked a lot about the renovation, but it's very exciting for us. This past fall and winter, we went through a renovation, or we called it a refresh, that allowed us to do a couple of things. The first thing is we were able to improve and upgrade some of our technology. And the second more visible thing is a lot of improvements to our interior space. So those photos are some photos of our newly refreshed library. Along with that, at the end of that time, we put in a new rotating community art display. I'm really proud of this. We have so much talent in this community when it comes to arts and artistic things. I draw stick figures, but everybody else is doing much better than I am. So this is a partnership that we've done over the past year with two of our local school districts. The first being the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District. And the second big one is the Deeringer School District. We're also going to have, right now, we have student artwork from North Taps Middle School in the branch. Our next one is going to be our first departure away from a school. We're actually going to be showcasing artwork from the summer camps that Prairie Bridge Community Coalition is hosting for free for any child in the community. Right now, I think they go just about up until the time that school starts. One of my to-do tasks for this fall is going to be figuring out the next rotation, and I am looking to grow and expand. I'm going to put out and ask to all of you if you know of any local groups or organizations that would like to be a part of that, that would like to showcase their art in the library. Please let me know. I would love to hear about that. All right. We have a couple entities that stand alongside of us and support the work that we do. Gretchen already showcased one of them, the Pierce County Library Foundation. This is a photo of our annual trivia bee that we do in the fall. You can see everyone is having an uproariously good time there. The other entity that supports us is our Local Friends of the Library Organization. And the Friends of the Bonnie Lake Library, if you have not met any of them, they are wonderful. They are so enthusiastic and positive. They recently held from July 20th through 22nd their first book sale in three years. They were so excited to come back from the pandemic and be able to do that. And over the course of those three days, they raised $1,017.50, being real specific here, that supports the library programs that we offer and the work that we do for our community. You also heard me talk about this, our Refresh Open House event that we had this past April. I believe Mayor McCullough noted that we held it on tax day, actually, which I haven't thought about. We had about 200 people come that day to attend our event. We had a magic show. People got the chance to vote for names for two of our favorite new pieces of furniture. You see them pictured up there, our little jewels that look like elephants in the children's area. The slide is a little hard to read, but just in case you're wondering, the yellow one is now sunny and the gray one is raindrop. Those were our winners. They also got the chance to participate in a library scavenger hunt, check out our refresh space and learn more about library resources and services. We had a couple people from this room join us that day. I want to thank Councilmember Fullerton and Councilmember Watson. And I also want to thank the mayor and all of the city council members and the city employees who have come into the library since the refresh. It has not been my experience always in libraries to have this close relationship between the city and the library. I love it. I love it. We love seeing you. We love your engagement. All right, now we're going to talk a little bit about some of the services that we offer in the library and where we're at with them. And I'm going to start with materials because usually the first thing people think about when they think about libraries is our books. So we are continuing to invest in all of the good things that people love, print books, DVDs, eBooks, audiobooks. And then if we hear of materials that are specifically of interest to a community, we try to look at and invest in those as well. There are two big spaces projects that you may have heard about going on with the library system. One of them is planning for our interim library location in Lakewood. The second one is a little bit closer to home. Our August 1st primary election saw voters vote yes to a new library in Sumner. Those results were just certified today, so we are having little mini celebrations. We signed a card and brought some chocolates down to our coworkers down in Sumner to celebrate that. And there are some other projects going on throughout the system that you may not have heard of. I'm going to skip ahead because I am missing my notes here. All right. Okay, so other projects you may not have heard of include replacing siding at the Fife Pierce County Library, replacing doors at several of our locations, including Gig Harbor, Key Center, South Hill and Stillcomb. Right now, the Grand Pierce County Library is getting a mini refresh, sort of like ours. They had their parking lot paved. They're having some updates made to both their interior, public and staff spaces. And then again, close to home, we'll be working on mitigating some contamination and updating the landscaping outside of the Buckley Pierce County Library. All right, technology is another favorite one of our customers. So a couple of projects that we are working on in this area, installing modern technology in all of our public meeting rooms. If you haven't been in our meeting room, we have a beautiful, big new TV. It has wireless capability. It has screen casting capability. The people who come in to do meetings have been big fans of that. And another project that we have seen is replacing public laptops for all of our customers to improve their experience. That's one of those slightly less visible things that got done along with our refresh, but very, very appreciated by our customers. Partnerships. So I mentioned our Friends of the Library group. They are receiving book donations right now. If you have books that you've been holding on to, they're happy to take them. They are doing book sales. We had our book sale in July. Our next one they're already planning for will be in November. And they have a couple of standing book sale shelves in the library at all times as well. Another partnership we're really excited about, we have a representative right here, a partnership with the market and the city of Bonnie Lake to bring food lockers to the Bonnie Lake Library. And this is really wonderful because part of what the library does is we support all people, but especially people who are facing food insecurity or who are living paycheck to paycheck or maybe not living with a paycheck at all. So that's really going to help us all work in partnership to uplift those folks together. All right, classes and events. We've been outside and inside having a lot of fun this summer. I am so glad that we were able to bring back this past calendar year in-person in-branch events. And we're also doing virtual, but there is just something about seeing people face-to-face again that just brings a lot of joy to our hearts. We're also in a process of reviewing and looking as we come back from the pandemic about what do our communities want? What are they looking for? What do they need? So that's a process we're going through right now. The last area is business processes. We have a brand-new website at mypcls.org. It's very exciting. Our goal with enhancing the website was to make it easier to use and navigate. And also as a secondary goal, make sure that we're staying compliant with all ADA guidelines as well. And one final big project has been eliminating fines and removing barriers to library services. Fines can provide a barrier to library access for certain folks. And we are all about eliminating the fines and welcoming those folks back to having access to the library. So that's been a big project this year. I know sometimes questions come up about what happens to the materials. A lot of, there's a lot of data out there to support the fact that library books and materials still do get returned when libraries go fine-free. I am actually now a veteran. This is the third library system I've been a part of that has gone fine-free while I've been a part of it. And I can say our books come back. So that's another big project that we've been working on and you'll see some progress on as we move forward. Okay, my last slide is a fun one. This is some things that, what people are saying about the Bonnie Lake Library. So one of the things that I do and have done over the course of my 17 years in libraries is collect impact stories, and that is stories of the library making a difference, stories of kindness, of concern, of community building. So these are some of the things that I have collected here at Bonnie Lake. And I have to say, I've been here just a little over a year now. In one year here, I have collected more stories than I have in multiple years in other locations. We have a special community here. It is a really amazing thing to be a part of it. So I'm going to end with a quick little story, one of the impact, one of the many, many impact stories I've collected is about one of our younger customers who is a regular visitor to the library. We just saw her yesterday, actually, so I was like, well, this is very timely. She comes to the library and she loves to check out lots and lots of DVDs. She is a child who has some learning difficulties. And her mom shared with us that she goes through quite a process in preparing for her library visit. She looks at the catalog online. She picks out the DVDs she's interested in. And she takes a long time to carefully handwrite a list of all the titles that she wants to check out. And then when she comes into the branch, she makes a beeline for the desk. We all know her. She knows us. We take that handwritten list and we help her find all the titles that she want. One thing we didn't know until recently is that when she's done watching all of the DVDs, her mom said she actually will go to the computer and she writes stories about all the characters in the DVDs that she just watched. And I thought that was amazing. Her mom said she wouldn't be able to have all of those experiences if you weren't present here in the community. And she used a term that I have since adopted. I'm going to have to check with her for copyright rights on this one. The term is life enhancers. I love that term. I feel like it is really representative of what the library and what library staff members come ready to do every day. Because every day, as Gretchen mentioned, we have thousands of people who are coming through the doors of a library building or they're encountering us online or out in the community. And each of those people, they bring something specific to the table. They might be trying to learn a new skill. They might be looking for a job. Our littlest visitors, they might be trying to learn how to read and struggling with that journey. They might be just trying to find a sense of community and a place to belong. So our goal as library staff members is to greet and welcome and help all of those people feel like they belong and feel like they can connect to the things that they're looking for. That is a great, great responsibility, but such a privilege. It is why I've been in this job for 17 years. And I just really appreciate the opportunity to do that here in Bonnie Lake. Okay, I'm going to turn it back over to Gretchen.
For wrapping it up, thank you all. The last thing I would just leave you with is that I mentioned, you know, I am one year new to this position, new to Pierce County, new to the state of Washington. And we will be spending the next year doing strategic planning and long-range facility planning. The library has a master plan for 2030. Nothing is the same from when that plan was written in 2010. So we will be dusting things off and resetting that process in '23 with our Board of Trustees to really look at what the landscape will be for our facilities and our services in the coming years. So with that, thank you. I think we went a little long, but I do appreciate the time to get to chat with you all. And we're happy to answer any questions as much as time allows for this evening. Thank you very much.
Hi, Gretchen. So when I, when I made my visit that day, we, you know, the, the library is beautiful, but being the sixth most visited library in Pierce County system, we mentioned the fact that we needed to make the library larger. And I was asking, you know, who owns the property on the side and behind? And I believe that was the city that owns that property. But the question is, is when you start planning, planning for the new strategies, is there a possibility of adding up? Like to make the, because I know we need to have the library bigger, so can we go up rather than out? Because then we could add more square footage. I don't know if that's a possibility.
I would say broadly speaking, Councilmember Fullerton, that everything is an opportunity. Second floors can be, as you would know from a building this size, elevators, additional staffing costs for a public library, that's, you know, supervision for staffing. But we're starting from scratch, so I think every location we have has some form of a constraint, whether that's site and, you know, it only has so much acreage and the building takes up X amount of footprint. We'd have to look at whatever local zoning codes allow for, provide for, costs for the capital as well as the services. But constraints also force innovation, and so I would just answer in broadly. And so, um, I would just answer in broadly, everything's on the table from my perspective. Um, and in the end, um, you know, you can only do what you have the money to do when you're in public, public buildings and public works. Um, so part of this process will also be to turn over all of our stones, uh, to find where we have resources that may not require public votes or whether we need a strategy for, um, like, subdistrikting, um, is a tool that RCW provides to public libraries. That's kind of what we were testing in Sumner with this, um, library capital facility area. So we, we have limited capital tools to do those projects. Um, but we have a toolbox and we're just gonna have to figure out which tools will work for which projects. It's a little extra answer to, the short answer to your question.
We did have--
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Watson, did you have a question too?
Well, I was gonna make a statement. I just wanted to let you guys, wanted to follow up, Winwin?
Oh, I was just saying, like, um, we had, uh, Councilmember Baldwin and I had the opportunity to visit the, uh, live, the new re-venovated--
Yeah, I was talking to--
--library in Spokane, which was amazing. And I was like, wow, if we could get the funding for something like that, grants, and they did it mostly through, uh, rescue grants from the, uh, ARPA funds, I think. But, um, that was amazing, and I would love to see us be able to do something like that and just have an incredible, um, place where people can come and have community together. But, um, yeah, so up and out.
I just wanna say your staff is amazing. Erin goes out all over the place and helps tell what's going on in the library, inform the community and stuff. And now to reach out with the food bank, they have a food lockers over there. Make people use your facilities and use the food bank's facilities too. Now they have one-stop place to go to, which is, we're wonderful. And then back to Winwin's question, I think if you came up with a plan to make a bigger library, I'm sure the city came up with some more property for you, move it someplace else if we needed to and make it work best for you. Go up, go out, you know, whatever works. We need a bigger library desperately and stuff. And, and as that grows, to Holly's growing and we're growing, the need is out there. And I appreciate all you have done. I look forward to more growth in the future, in the future.
I have been trying to reach out to, uh, city managers to understand all the different municipalities with your own development plans, to understand if there's civic centers or where there might be some opportunities to co-locate facilities. Um, it's always advantageous to save money and save, if you can share a break room with another public agency, then you don't have to build two break rooms. Um, so that is helpful for me to just understand what all the different communities' development plans are. So I am in touch with John--
Good.
--on your staff, yeah.
Okay, well, my strategy didn't work, which was on the ballot to, uh, scratch out the city of Sumner and erode in Bonny Lake. And nobody followed me on that one. But, uh, I, I do have two questions. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, in regards to that library that we were talking about, I just wonder if, um, there's a way just to get in, like, connecting with them and finding out? Because I do think that it is a shared space. There's a lot going on there. And it's, it's like I was telling you ladies, it's, it's more than just a library. It's literally like a community center. And it has all these different things that, that happen there and that are going on. It has a kitchen that people can rent. Um, you know, and I, again, I know a lot of it is money, like, that's what I was telling you ladies. But it's, it's really just even just being in communication with them to find out what it, what were their strategies? Because I know they said it was, it was a challenge. Yeah, yeah.
Is, are your strategies public? I mean, can we have privy to your strategies?
Yeah, our privileges are all under open--
Okay, good. So we can come and advocate, um, at the times that we could?
We have heard, so if I may--
Oh, yeah.
Um, most of our facilities were built in the late eighties. The district-wide bond passed in 1986. Majority of our buildings were built between '87 and '92. Um, all of them being 30 years old-ish, right? So all of them are experiencing end-of-life for HVAC systems, um, a challenge across the system for large, small, medium, and large branches. Um, so we also have growth shifts in the county, as you are all aware. Areas like Frederickson, um, Parkland Spanaway, where there's new investments in housing is gonna change the density in those areas where we don't have libraries. Um, so it'll be, um, a great challenge in my career that I'm eager to take on, uh, to understand how we can, um, adequately provide services when the constraints, um, are real with these different needs across the system. So, um, I've also heard and connected with, uh, the Tahale-Sumner Rotary and, you know, there's interests in putting branches into Halle and some of these other areas. Um, so we're gonna welcome all the input, that we're gonna look at all the plans that exist, um, to give us good information as we move through that process. And our board meetings are open and people can comment to our board anytime. The information's on the website. There's a form as well as in our public--
Customer, I think you, you mentioned you're a junior taxing district, of course, right? Um, is, with respect to the Bonny Lake area, are you already squeezed in that or is that, um, are you maxed out in that area?
Uh, in terms of the property tax, like a cap?
Yeah, yeah. Well, because of your junior taxing district, that says to me that you can be squeezed by other entities.
I'm not aware that we are in any situation with respect to hitting any caps. Our levy rate has been dropping.
Yeah.
Market has been increasing across the county. Um--
I don't know if Sherry-- Even if we did like a B and O, is a B and O, uh? Okay, yeah, good.
Not been made aware that that's something I need to worry about right now.
Future stuff.
I'm always worried when entities are junior taxing districts, you know, there's always issues there, so.
Yeah, the greatest challenge for us as a taxing district is having a 1% cap. Certainly this last year with costs of labor and inflation and how to manage, um, expenses and revenue overturning.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Absolutely. And the population density, I believe, is probably just as relevant up here as it is in Frederickson and whatnot, for what we can provide. I do have two specific questions, though. One of them being, since the building was built in 1982, are we ADA compliant now or are we just kind of skating along with that?
The refresh addressed the major issues.
Okay.
Um, anything that we would do that's more significant, um, would trigger a whole different set of, uh, of improvements. But the physical building in terms of space between shelving, desk heights for computers, for service desks, all of those meet, uh, the guidelines for ADA, physical use of the space.
Oh, good. And we'll--
Floor replacements that Erin mentioned are also to get accessible paddles and things that we can let the doors float. So, kind of working through all of those.
Well, it makes sense. And, uh, you mentioned, uh, having a, a good participation at fairs and whatnot. Are y'all planning on having a presence at Bonny Lake Days here in a couple of weeks? Maybe some of the 17 friends of the library can come and, uh, we can meet them.
To the friends, um, we, we are facing-- That we thought coming up will be beautify Bonny Lake.
A good job there, too. Thank you.
Oh, good. Okay.
We were also out at National Night Out, um, on August 1st. Uh, the one at, we got invited to three, which shows you, um, just how much is going on in the community. We were out at Prairie Ridge Community Center that day.
Nice. Okay. Oh, and, uh, I say two questions. I'm always, I always lie about that. Um, what I was wondering about too is with the, um, with digital technology that we do have nowadays. And I know, and just, I know how much we've grown since this, uh, this facility has been built. Um, and I was wondering about the, um, uh, the wait times or how-- We had a bunch of positive data. Do we have any data on people who have come in to try to find something and they can't because it's not there, or it's been checked out and there's a wait time for when they can get it? Has, you know, like, is there a big, uh, wait time between that? Or has digital technology kind of overs, oh, the, oh, the, can't talk tonight, my, my apologies. Um, but superseded that?
So when we look at our collections, one of the things we're factoring in is popularity. Um, so we do try to order, understanding what demand might be versus items. Because we know it's frustrating to wait. We all would like to have our books and things that we would like right away. Um, we also have a couple of different strategies that people can use, um, if they have a book that they want that is not immediately on the shelf. Um, as Gretchen mentioned, we have 34,000-some items, but there are many, many more out there in the library system. So we're happy to bring in items from other branches that are available through our hold system. Um, one of the unfortunately well-kept secrets of the library that I try to advocate for is we also participate in something called interlibrary loan, which if we don't own an item or we can't get it to you from within our library system, we will look at other library systems across the state and if needed, outside of the state and across the nation. It is, our goal as librarians, we want you to have your books. We want you to have the things that you want and you need. So those are some things we try to do, as well as just keeping an eye on that demand and trying to make sure that if we're getting suggestions from the community, we have a, a purchase. I forget the title, but, um, a way that people can do, oh, there we go, purchasing requests. If they have a specific book or an item that they want and we, we don't own it, they can do that as well.
Do you, do y'all keep data on it?
We do. I forget the actual ratio, but our librarians, the selectors, um, do regular reporting. So they'll look at what's called a holds ratio. For every one copy, we have five holds. As soon as it moves to six holds, they'll buy another copy if it's available. The biggest challenge you mentioned there was the digital content. So when it, with respect to licensing, there's a lot that's not in our control. Um, we can't get, uh, DVDs for this young person of a streaming only on Netflix, Netflix series, for example. It doesn't exist in a physical format, so we can't get something like that. Um, sometimes there's constraints around pricing and publishers. So, um, for eBooks or downloadable audio, um, different publishers will set different permissions and price points. Uh, so one eBook may cost $20 to buy a print copy of, and we bought 20, um, but the digital book costs $85, so we may only be able to buy five copies. But they are monitoring both of those to look at what the popularity is. And then we have a tool that's called a Lucky Day Collection in our, all of our branches. And our selectors will look for, okay, this is a bestseller. So that's how we can make sure we always have a bestseller on the shelf. And it's just a chance it's in today and you happen to get that new Harlan Coben book that you've been waiting to read this summer. Um, and that's a way that we pull those out of, um, and keep them more in the upfront circulation. I hope that addresses your--
Oh, a little bit.
I have another question. Um, you were saying that once it goes into like a six-book hold, for example, they'll go ahead and buy the, the physical copy. Um, what about with the eBooks? Obviously, it's a lot more. But, you know, if there is a really popular book that is constantly on a, like, a large old rotation, do you guys then purchase another?
Yeah, it's very similar. And I, don't quote me on the five books, six books hold ratio. Because our librarians may be having a heart attack back in the office. Um, there is a number, and I'm sorry, I don't know what it is. Yes, they treat it the same. They'll look at what's available. Some publishers will sell a license and it's just you borrow it 27 times and then it disappears. Sometimes it's, you know, they have different permissions. So the librarians really have to stay on top of six different publishers.
Gotcha. Okay.
They treat it the same, yes.
Okay.
All right. Oh, Deputy Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I actually don't have a question. I just wanted to say thank you for coming in here. I really appreciate it. Uh, thank you for working with the market. We love that, uh, coming in here with the city as well. Uh, and all those, uh, connections and partnerships that you guys are doing. You guys are doing a fantastic job. So I just wanted to say thank you for doing that.
Look forward to working with you all in next year too, as we build our future plans. Please reach out anytime.
Oh, uh, Ms. Cernich, would you like to approach the dais or do you just have a question?
Well, I wasn't planning on talking--
You, you never plan on talking.
I felt compelled. I first, I just wanted to compliment the ladies. Someone's hiring is, um, you know, how, how I refer to the library and the market more community-based. And I think there's no better example-- and the team here at the library of how they reach out to the community. We actually have STEM kids that are delivered weekly to market. And so the children look forward to coming and visiting and making that sort of cross connection that, um, and seeing the, the familiar faces. So when I go out to Prairie Ridge, Aaron's out there. When I'm at Emerald Hills, Aaron's there. It doesn't matter where I'm at, Aaron's at. And so what that means is the children in our community are seeing mothers of the community. And we are all together. Um, we are all together. And I just absolutely love that. I didn't know that they were gonna mention our partnership. I am absolutely, uh, overwhelmed about that. So thank you. Um, and then I just wanna say something. I felt compelled when, at the very end, um, when, when Erin was talking about public comment. So a lot of people, um, know about my work, but know very little about me. We don't talk about myself or experiences or why I do the work that I do. Um, a lot of people know, um, about me-- And there was a time in-- a north from my, and the light that I have now, um, that could have been quite-- Um, I describe a lot of what-- Never said it publicly, but I'm gonna say it tonight because it just meant a lot to me when we're talking about. Um, uh, a lot of times in the work that I do, people show up and these-- there has been an extreme separation from their community and their network. That is why they're reaching out for resources, that, oh, they're needing that sense of community. When I stayed at home with my child and made-- um, I was experiencing during that, uh, an extreme separation. Uh, I had never been a member. I lived in our community for-- and have really commuted most-- And the type of work I did, there were not mothers in my work. I do not have a mother, and I do not have mothers that I saw mothering. And the extreme separation from my community at that time was absolutely-- to the point that I was not-- And I remember in that desperation saying to my husband, I don't know what to do. I thought I was, I feel alone. And he said, I looked down in Panorama, he said-- I said-- And it's weird to think about somebody like me. And so I put her in the stroller and I walked up from Panorama up here across floor 10. And I walked in and I met Singh, um, the, the children's library type. And it was very hard for me to be there and-- And I went home and I told my husband, I, okay, I, you know, felt okay, felt okay. I went the next week and Singh remembered my name and she remembered my daughter's name in our community. And from there, that really built, and it builds a fear of connecting with-- But I think a lot about what might have-- that separation of community and-- I wasn't able to come into a community, feel connected. I made an entire network of friends, photo shoots and all kinds of great things with that group of life. Um, and I just wanted to say that, not to take away the ad, but these women-- for what happens at the market, yes. But the connection that's happening at the library is so important. They're ruled in full. So thank you very much.
No, thank you, Stacey. We appreciate that. Alrighty. Well, let's see, uh, the, okay, and open discussion? Oh, we're moving on to open discussion. Does anybody want to discuss openly? Okay, Councilmember Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I was disappointed looking on the Facebook page for a city that you didn't think about cooling centers on our page. Been a very hot last couple of days, although the cities have. And on top of that, I went down to where Noma is, our senior center, our cooling center.
Right.
And I went down there at 3 o'clock and it was unbearable. We had people down there having a meeting this afternoon. And when the offices, I went to one of the offices down there, and you couldn't even barely stand in there. I'm just disappointed we didn't put in portable coolers, pick up something for them till we get that problem resolved because our seniors don't have air conditioning, can't go to senior center and get cooled off.
So we have had that. Mr. Johnson and I were actually talking about that this afternoon.
Yeah, if I could just add in, there actually is, we've been renting two coolers. And there was one, I was actually down there just about the same time, so I don't know how we missed each other. Um, then there is one, as you come in the front door, it's in the corner. It's plumbed out the window there in the far corner, and it's got two tubes that are blowing into the room.
It was hot there, wasn't it?
Um, it was warm. I didn't find it difficult to stand. Um, I, I was concerned because I had received some comments, um, from some of, at least one of the staff secondhand that the kitchen is very, uh, hot. And, um, I wanted to get down there. Obviously, there was a lot on the agenda today with food for thought and so on. But we have been taking measures to do the best that we can on a temporary basis to bring-- But we have been taking measures to do the best that we can on a temporary basis to bring cooler air to the main public space. As you know, the kitchen isn't plumbed for any kind of HVAC system, which is just the way the building has always been. And over time, there's been a freezer added to the interior of the building, a larger stove and those things obviously generate heat, which makes it pretty tough during the summertime. There is a plan in place, which Chuck out of administrative services could talk to further about how we're going to make some changes there. In the meantime, we have received two heat pumps, which were delivered yesterday, that Mike Engler will be, begin installing on Monday in order to provide a little bit more relief than the temporary units can provide. So we are aware of it, we're doing what we can, and hopefully before too long, they'll have a little bit more relief there.
Went into Phil's offices, it really was hot in there where Phil was at.
Yeah, I was talking, yeah, I actually was in there talking with him as well, so.
We must just cross each other because.
Yeah.
Councilmember Watson actually brings up a very salient point. The thing that concerns me about is that it was not posted on Facebook.
Right, they can go, there are places for them to go and we should have done something for them. On the radio, we can call a number and it'll tell you where the coolest cooling centers are.
Well, yeah, and it's another problem that we're having with this disconnect as far as our messaging is concerned. We've got to start streamlining.
Isn't for our emergency management, isn't the senior center listed as a cooling station?
It was, yes.
So that seems inappropriate if we're having heat in the emergency management area.
It's in the Facebook page, so I'll go see what's going on down there after my meeting this afternoon and then believe it. And they were having a meeting going on for the staff down there.
Is that something that could put some ARPA funds towards to make sure that we actually have an air conditioning unit or anything? Because that's our emergency management area.
Yes, Mr. Johnson just said we've got the two heat pumps that have come in. We did have two cooling.
Is that going to be like an air conditioning system that's going to be put into the building or is it like temporary?
So I, there's a couple of different things going on here. The heat pumps that were just purchased and that will be installed are honestly a stopgap measure. But as part of the $650,000 in funding that we've received from the state, there is work included in that money, a project included there, to convert the single phase power that currently goes to the building to three phase power so that then the HVAC can be upgraded on a more permanent basis and a complete system can be redesigned to serve the larger square footage of the senior center as it exists now. It used to be a smaller building and over time it's had bits and pieces added onto it, but there wasn't consideration for how the HVAC would interact with that additional square footage. So what we're hoping to be able to do here now is take those state funds, design a new system that's going to be able to serve the entire building more appropriately.
Excellent.
And Councilmember Paul.
Okay, so the state funds is to basically design some sort of a system. It's not necessarily funding to then create the HVACs.
As I understand the scope of the projects right now, this first phase and the money that's included in that $650,000 would do the work to provide the appropriate power and provide the design. But my understanding is from what I've learned from our facilities people, that the actual procurement and construction of the new system would have to be funded out of a separate pot of future funds.
Do you happen to know a ballpark figure of what that might look like?
I'm afraid you were going to ask that. I don't have, I don't have a concrete number. I could give you a ballpark of somewhere between three and 500,000, but that is a, you know, I just don't have a number that I would feel comfortable saying it'll be X.
Okay, so I'm not an expert HVAC person, obviously, but I know that sometimes when people use the units, for example, that are, you know, washing in from the window, that's one option, but is there a potential option to maybe get one of those, you know, I've seen them, use them in Japan a lot, but they're the wall units, the Mitsubishi wall units that, have you seen, you know, you don't need, you don't need a window.
We, I think what you're talking about is very similar to what's in the public services center. We have a lot of those split systems.
Yes.
Where you have the unit up on the.
Is that a more affordable option? I mean HVAC, you're tearing into walls, you're putting in.
Yeah, so we're probably in the same boat about our knowledge of heating and ventilation systems.
Okay, that's fair.
You know, pipes and pumps, I'm your guy. But so I'd have to do a little bit of work and conversations with our facility people, but as part of this, this $650,000 that I'm referring to, that's certainly a question that could be answered and would be, I would assume would be something we'd be looking at.
Yeah, that would definitely be more economical for sure. And it's ductless, so you don't have to.
You don't, yeah.
And you could have, you can have, a mini split can do multiple units in multiple rooms and you can also do heat as well as air conditioning in each individual room that it's in. So I think that would definitely be great to look into.
Absolutely. Oh, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you know, are we continuing to go back for another grant next year in regards to that whole system or is that something that's going to be coming back to budget?
So I would need to talk with Chuck. Obviously, the senior center is out of his department, the management of that. I would, I believe he has a plan for going after additional funds to then continue these larger projects. I would anticipate that the way that they set that up through the application process is that this is designed now, future funds to construct. And so I would anticipate we'd be going back next year to ask for additional funds.
And Mr. Robertson, did you have a comment?
So what I know about the $650,000 is it will be coming to finance and council as soon as they get the state to sign off on the projects that they're wanting. I've talked to Leslie about this and so they're working through that project list right now. And once they get that approved by the state, then they'll come back and bring that to you guys and have a discussion with you, you know, approving the funds. So it's nothing that's been approved yet by you. So it will come back and it's my understanding that yes, they plan on asking for more in the future.
Do you have any idea what the turnaround might be on?
On this grant that they're working on? So when I was talking to Leslie, because she was going to bring it to finance next week, and I said, not until you have the grant ready for you to sign the agreement. So it's my understanding that it'll probably be later this year that they bring that back to you. I asked her when the money was going to be spent because I have a budget amendment coming. She said partly in 2024 and partly in 2025. So they don't even anticipate being able to spend all of this money in 2024 yet. So getting additional money, I'm not sure at what point that would be, if it'd be '25, '26, I don't know.
And Councilmember Watson?
I've got two more things that we're done with that one.
Sure.
I went to the retirement party for Brian Jeter. Ryan Johnson was there too, was a wonderful staff was there, a lot of staff were there and it was great to go down to see him and see his family and come goodbye and saw the tears that were down there. So it was really nice to see him up, always been first city over the years. He has a big, large background growing here, leaving and the staff he brought on too, so. And the other thing is, and I already talked to Ryan Johnson about this, but I wanted to make you aware of it. I know Lake Bonnie is covered by state, but, and we always have weeds growing out there. This year, a little more than normal because of the heat we've had. I had a complaint from the citizen last week that they're out there and they got on the boat because of amount of growth in the water, they slipped and slipped back in the water. Fortunately, they were fine, but they're telling me, Thomas Moore, it's worse than usually is. And the thing we can do to help make a little bit safer for them by moving the growth wave. And I have pictures too for you if you'd like to see them. I'm prepared.
So how do we know what good looks are?
Well, you know, it's from the shore there, you know.
Which year was this from?
Yeah, and Councilmember Watson is correct. The lake is, it's kind of a little unusual in that Lake Bonnie is actually administered by the Department of Ecology. It's not city-owned property. So I'll be happy to reach out to them as well and see what we can do about that. My guess is, is, well, I won't guess.
Something by the launch of the ice.
It's their property, so we'll see. But I will definitely, I will definitely get in touch with them.
I thought those pictures were from Dever Jane.
Yeah. It looks like Dever Jane.
That's a private lake. That's a private.
That's all I've got tonight. All right, thank you, Councilmember Watson. Let's see, oh, Member Swatman.
Yeah, great. Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know, I've heard from some people talking about changes in the insurance system where, you know, policies are being changed in a way that the consumer may not really see very readily. There's talk on the street about homeowner insurance changes where they're changing their policies when they, you know, have to redo them so that the homeowner would not be able to get the same home rebuilt. They would not, you know, because it's from the insurance side, right? They're building those things. And even to the extent of where supposedly they wouldn't build to the code that's current, they'd build to the code when the product was there. So they're not, you know, updating it if necessary. But my question, I think revolves around, does the city have any, you know, play in, because it appears to me that they're selling that product to our citizens? I don't know if our legal people are online or not. Is it, is one of them up there? Is she awake?
She was.
She was. She's not awake anymore.
Oh.
I guess I'll have to touch base, but I don't know if anybody's ever heard because, you know, they're selling the product, right?
Right.
And if they're going to change their product or, you know, you would think that the city possibly, unless it's like something that the state says that the cities can't regulate, does the city have an issue that they can use there to say that you can't sell that type of a policy to the citizens?
Well, I'm going to emulate Mr. Johnstone over there and say.
We'll ask him.
Yeah, I don't know.
Right, exactly.
Right now, it's something that we need to definitely refer to our city attorney when.
Yeah, I'd be interested to find out if there is a play there or not. Mr. Ross. Right.
Yeah. Well, it seems to be how the insurance business is going now instead of, it's like replacement as opposed to repair.
Exactly.
Yeah, so.
It'd be interesting to find out if they say that. And I don't know if I have, do I get one more issue?
Absolutely.
And I know soon we'll probably be hearing more on the Parks and Rec situation, right? Is that coming, is that already scheduled?
Well, I've got something to say about that here in a minute.
Well, is it scheduled for the future, you know? Yeah, that's good. Because we had a great little decide, well, a discussion to outrate a committee, the finance committee about it. But I look forward to getting information from the staff on that and possibilities on that because, you know, I'm thinking that it's a great program for the government at some level to be running because there's a lot of little pieces to that that I think that the city can play in. There may be other pieces that couldn't go to other organization. But really, the end of my thought is that, you know, I hope that the administration and the people that are involved in that can come to the council with possibilities, you know, that they'll be able to do that because I've heard, you know, challenges to, well, what do you want to do, the council wants to do? You know, from my perspective, I want to keep the program in some respects going, but I don't know how to do that because there's a very large expenses involved in it, the folks that run it. You know, I would like them to give me the option to say, well, you know, right now, I understand it's a $400,000 plus deposit maybe, is that what it's?
Ask and you shall receive. So David is actually working on that right now. I hopped on and helped him out on my day off and so he has what the salaries would be. He's looking to bring you a presentation on the next Tuesday on what that would look like in options to reduce that $450,000 gap.
Excellent.
Next week?
Next week.
All right.
Thank you.
How about we do this in going order because everybody has, and we'll leave the Deputy Mayor to be last.
Don't forget about Kelly, maybe he's got some. Well, he hasn't raised his hand.
He hasn't raised his hand. He doesn't even show his video.
Okay, so I just, I wasn't here last week, so I apologize for that. I was taking care of my parents. But I went to the CFF meeting.
Thank you very much.
On the third, you're welcome. And I just wanted to let people know, like tonight, they're, they're actually down in the, I believe it's the Family Learning Center and they're filling the backpacks. But starting on August 17th at Daffodil Valley from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, they will be handing out backpacks for all of the kids. And then on August 22nd at the Liberty Ridge Elementary in Bonnie Lake, from noon to 2:00, they will be handing out backpacks. And then also on the 24th of August at the Sumner Bonnie Lake Family Resource Center, they will be handing out backpacks as well. So these are all for the kids that need backpacks for starting school. And I believe they're starting on the 5th of September this year. That's all I have for the CFF.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Baldwin?
I just have a couple of questions. So in regards to the backpacks, because I haven't even heard those dates. And so that would then make me say maybe some residents have not heard of those dates as well. So if they're not going to have all of the backpacks handed out, will they just give them to the schools on the first day? Because obviously the kids will be there.
It is on the school website, on their calendar. And you can actually click on that date and it gives you the address and directions and everything. So that's pretty good. And I think, I think they have a really good turnout for those backpacks. So they usually get rid of all of them, I think.
I had one more question, just because government, so I want to make sure it's nice and clear. So when you say that you're coming back with a heating and cooling, as far as a permanent solution is concerned, are you coming back with a plan as far as like having a duct system or are you going to present an option of something ductless versus a duct system so that we can look at the cost analysis, the benefit to cost analysis for both things?
Well, honestly, my hope would be that, that staff would have the freedom to select an alternative and bring that forward as the final alternative, being that, and I'm not trying to sound the way this may come across, but being hired to do this work, that would probably be the most streamlined way to go and it'll allow us to get to the finish line much, much quicker. Some of my issue in trying to give more definitive answers here tonight is because I feel like in some degree, to some degree, my department's caught in a weird spot because we don't, we don't manage the senior center. That's actually out of administrative services. So I don't want to be speaking for another department head who may already have a more definitive plan in place for you. And so I would like to make sure that Chuck gets that opportunity to share with you what his vision has been for this effort moving forward. But certainly where public services dovetails into this is we are providing a contract support for all of this work moving forward. And so as it pertains to that, my preferred method of handling that would be to bring back the selected alternative for your evaluation instead of putting on you all the discussion of evaluating different HVAC alternatives. I think that that is something that we should probably handle at the staff level and bring back to you as our final plan to move forward.
Yeah, no, that's, you must be misunderstanding what I'm saying. I'm not asking for the, us as a council to evaluate different systems. I'm just, I'm curious of whether there is going to be two different alternatives that have drastic price differences. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? And I understand that staff is being hired to do things, but again, it's still, it's a government entity and government moves very sloth-like. And it has nothing to do with the staff, has everything to do with all the tape that you have to move through. So that's, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
That's the only reason I'm asking. I just, because sometimes it's like, here's an expensive option, here's another expensive option, that's almost the same thing.
Yeah, and part of what's missing from this equation is that whatever projects we move forward with, the state has to buy off on.
Yeah.
Because they're supplying the funds for it, right? So, so I don't know if this sounds like I'm kind of hedging, you know, giving you a definitive answer. I can tell you that at the design level, certainly we would be looking at different alternatives and we want to select the one that's going to be most fiscally responsible.
Gotcha. Okay.
Well, if you did give us a definitive answer, I'd be a little suspicious of that. Or to be on the gen in the near future.
All right, make sure Chuck knows that.
Okay, I'll take the money and add on to the senior center.
So I wanted to talk about the rec program and the Reed property. I know that there was talk of kind of taking the temperature at council and kind of onesies and twosies and trying to figure this thing out. However, it sounds like that might go into the end of the month, maybe even the middle of next month, and I'm not okay with that. So I'm just going to talk about it here and we're going to figure it out. We voted on June 13th, over two months ago, to start negotiating with MRAC, at least in regards to the Reed property. We have not had a meeting, nothing has happened. I know they've been wanting some internal conversations about which doors to go through. They want to present those doors and Sherry can correct me if I'm wrong on any of these, but we kind of mentioned these at finance before earlier. So door one, how we can move forward is we can leave the Reed property in the water fund and rent it to MRAC at full market value, which to me makes no sense at all because they're the ones taking all the risk, they're building and putting money into the project and we would do absolutely nothing. Door two is to do an interfund loan for a full market value of somewheres four million some dollars.
Not, not an interfund loan.
Sorry.
It would be an interfund purchase.
Okay.
Yeah, so the original slide was put together saying a loan and I'm like, who keeps saying loan?
That's me.
It will not be a loan, it would be a purchase. From the general fund buying the property from the water fund.
And in order to do that, what was the three, there was three years associated?
No, so that was the whole, and I'm not real sure where that all got started. So there's an updated slide that apparently hasn't made its way out anywhere. So there is no three-year thing, forget all that, forget the interfund loan. Option two is the, and not trying to be disrespectful here, I just want to make sure we get the right information.
Absolutely, please.
Option two would be the general fund buys the property from the water fund, the general fund now owns that property. The general fund has the ability, we have a decent amount of savings that can be used for capital-type projects, money that could be transferred to parks as you've done, I think $2.8 million last year for Allen York Park. It can be used for streets. It cannot or should not be used for ongoing expenses like salaries or anything like that, but it can be used for capital-type purchases. So this would be a great use of those funds. You currently have two savings accounts already, the cumulative reserve fund and the contingency fund. I know the contingency fund has like 1.2 million in it, cumulative reserve, I think we fed that, if Justin was here, he'd remember because he's the one who pushed for that. I think it was a million into that one. And I'm projecting with the, all of the used ARPA money, because remember, we did that as lost revenue to make sure that the feds weren't able to take that from us, that will go into the general fund, capital, ending fund balance, savings, however you want to kind of look at it. I project that by the end of 2024, we'll have about $17 million in there. So you have four or five million dollars to purchase that property. The general fund still owns that property, so it's not like anything's being lost here. And then you can sell it if you ever choose to, you know, a future council decides they don't want to be in that business or they need money, that property can still be sold. So that's option two, no loan, straight out purchase.
Okay, I kind of had that one as option three.
Okay. I mean, a loan you could do, I would never recommend it because you have to pay the current value interest, which why would we pay interest if we can straight out buy it?
Yeah, I totally agree.
So that was the loan, no loan?
Yeah, so that was my door number three, which I think makes the most sense. That is basically, we can buy the property, we can give them a dollar lease, they can come in and work the property. We would end up moving it, annexing it into the, into the city because it's for municipal purpose, so as a park, so we can do that. And then all of the permitting and everything can go through the city as well. To me, that's the most streamlined and I think makes the most sense. The city's really, other than moving the money around from the general fund to the water fund essentially to do that, is out nothing. My apologies, I have to take off. Okay.
I will see you.
Do we need to make a motion to have you run the meeting now?
No, he just runs it by default.
Right. So anyway, to me, that makes the most sense, that we can do that, we can move some money around and then MRAC is willing to come in and do the work. The, the big question can be, you know, well, we have to protect the city, right? So we need to make sure we do that properly. I'm not, I don't think that's that hard. I think we can do an MOU soon, sooner rather than later. To say that we're at least working with MRAC and headed in this general direction, we don't know how we're going to get there yet, but there, you can write those with contingencies, if this, then that. They would...
That's how we did the last kid's house way back when.
Yeah, yeah.
We took it over, leased it.
And I think that's why I'm so, I want the right word, frustrated or disappointed so far with the process because it's been just a long time. And the staff that's not here, there's a couple of them probably need to hear this, not the people that are here, but it's, yeah, they can listen to it, right? I'm concerned, I want this thing to move forward and MRAC is taking a large risk and they are putting out money and time and effort in to try to do something and they're waiting, they're waiting, waiting, waiting for us. They would like to go after a, several grants. One in particular is called the Lumen Field Grant because they're trying to put in, I think it's 25 fields by 2025 when the World Cup comes around and all this. In order to do that, they have to have their grant in by September 30th. I've mentioned a couple of these dates, trying to get people to move and let, hey, let's have a meeting and it just seems like it's just getting longer and longer and longer and we're not having any meetings. So we already voted, this is not something that we need to talk or vote on or anything, it's just more of a, I want staff to move. I would like, I can't direct them, but we can as a whole, as to the direction we would like to go. I think we already did that when we voted to move forward. So I'd like to see that move forward.
I do know that, sorry.
Yeah, go for it, please.
I do know that the city administrator's currently working on getting an updated appraisal for the property because we have to, and I know Councilmember Swatman...
Yeah, you figured I was going to...
He calls me out on this, it needs to be as much of an arms-length transaction as possible. So because the water fund is a proprietary fund to stand on its own, we need to make sure that we're not shorting them. We are not allowed legally to short them and say, well, we'll give you $2 million for it instead of the $5 million it's worth or whatever it may be worth. So he's working on that and he's also working on the value of a lease.
Yeah.
So that, so that the city has that information.
Awesome, and I want us to go through that process. I just want to see an MOU reached that, hey, we're moving forward with something, we don't know what that's going to look like yet and that's okay, right? If then, if this, then that, it's not, I think we're making it, not us here, but I think it can be made to be more difficult than what it really is. Councilmember Baldwin.
Well, I think it has everything to do with Sherry's correction of step two that you were saying, right? There's misconceptions, missteps, this, it's, it's not being communicated properly and I think a lot of what the concern is just where people are assuming that this has everything to do with the moving of the rec program. I know that was a huge thing that was thrown out there and it's not even a part of the conversations. I know that it was listed in some of the paperwork that we saw at a meeting once, but like I know the deal that you're trying to make right now to benefit the city at a very low cost, I mean, $5 million and not moving at a snail's pace is, is going to highly benefit the community instead of like my kids waiting until they're 25 and then we actually have those fields here when it can be done a lot faster. So I think there's, there was just this weird concern or fear in the air that, you know, there was going to be this hostile takeover of the rec program and that's not, that's not what's being, that's not what the conversation is being had. It has everything to do with how can we move the money for that step three option, save, I mean, the city will benefit and so will the citizens. So I just, I don't know why it's taking so long either.
Councilmember Fuller, then.
Yeah, so, and what you're saying also is that an MOU, that's not a contract, so they're not, that can be changed and...
It's non-binding.
It's non-binding and then, but that gives MRAC the ability to let the grant people know that we are working with them and that could help them to get the grant all that much sooner.
Correct.
And because they need to get that written before September 30th so that they can get all of the money possible that they need. So I think it's great.
I, I just, oh, go ahead, go ahead. I just wanted to add too, especially because it's not a contract and they're working with this MOU, I mean, that, that is a high risk for any person to take on financially when there's nothing set in hard stone. And so I'm really thankful that they, that there's this option.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Swatman.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I'm always a proponent of great organized parks and rec and sports and all that kind of stuff and it's a fantastic deal that you guys are coming up with there. You know, so, because it appears, you know, I was thinking that the MOU is something that can be done anytime. I don't see that it's a big deal. I'm like shocked that, you know, it takes more than 30 minutes to get at least that piece done, right? You know, you'd think that that could be coming out. The selling and transferring of the property, you think you could do that, you know, also at the same time. I don't see that that's like a holdup in MOU, but maybe the legal people know a little bit more on that kind of stuff. Yeah, the problem that, you know, that I point out with it, and it's not a problem, maybe I shouldn't say that, I would say that I'm really super confident that there's other ways to not have to move that money around. So hopefully that'll be fully explored, but that's kind of a conversation with the executive and stuff like that because, you know, the public looking at it and saying that, you know, why are we giving $2 million to a private organization? I mean, that would be a question I would have as a public, right? You know, I'm confident that that doesn't have to be done because I like their organization. I think they can get it done without having to transfer the money around like that. Regardless of whether we had to or not, I don't think that's a stopper to me to the MOU, right? So again, I'm with you thinking that why haven't they done this MOU? I don't know where, you know, where the big holdup is in that. You know, because the mayor's left, if the public doesn't know, so maybe, you know, that's the person with the information, right?
So I don't believe, at least from a financial perspective, that we're transferring anything to MRAC. It's from the, the property to the, from the water fund to the general fund?
Yeah, sure.
General fund revenue, then go to the water fund, which also helps out the water fund, which is what you guys have been wanting to do, right? You talked about during FCS presentations about possibly selling that property. So you're just selling, you're essentially transferring the money to a fund that you all wanted the money to go to and now it's an appropriate way to do that, right?
I couldn't agree more. I think the, like with the ARPA funds that came in, we wanted those initially to go to water. I think a lot of people had said that.
Yeah, but it benefits a lot of people that are outside the city is what it amounts to, right? Because your water district is whatever it is, I don't know, is it only 50% inside, outside or whatever it is?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So there, you're taking general fund money, you know, to me, and that's part of that, you know, frank, open discussion is that, oh, I'm not going to paint the senior center and I'm not going to, you know, put the proper cooling in over there because I want to give millions of dollars to a private organization. Isn't that what it is? And, you know, Sherry's like, well, wait a minute, you're just transferring it because you're not really giving it to, you know, you're leasing it to them. But to me, again, you can do this lease and MOU without having to do that transfer of money is what my contention is. Because I'm more concerned with taking care of the needs internal to the city is what I'm looking at, you know, type of thing.
I think I see what you're saying.
So, and I think you and I talked a little bit about this at finance, too. The attorney, and I had a discussion about if the water fund could do that and according to the attorney, and she can speak probably better about what she told me than I can, obviously, but she's not on right now. So you get me. She told me that you couldn't do that because the water fund is not, it's a proprietary fund, so you can't have a park for, in the water.
Oh, yeah, I agree. So my contention is, is that I want to sell the property then, fine, like you were thinking, and it becomes a value discussion where it's like, oh, well, fine, you know, the water entity, enterprise that I run is a business, as we do as a council, I'm going to sell it for $200 to the general fund and the general fund's going to buy it for $200. And then you get into that other little roundy discussion where it's like, oh, well, you can't do that. Well, show me why I can't do that and that's, that information from the experts, the legal people to say, oh, this is why you can't do that. Because I think I can do that and practically, we do it all the time. We have to go through a process where we have, you know, public works stuff has to be a public hearing and you have to do this kind of thing to sell the truck, you know, right? So you're...
The money goes back to the public works fund.
No, but if I'm, if I have a truck, you know, if I have a truck that's in the enterprise fund or whatever, or a piece of property, piece of property in this enterprise fund, I can't just sell it or give it away kind of thing. So I have to like go out through this process to get rid of it out of the enterprise fund.
So, well, so RCW, I don't know what RCW is or what, right? I don't, I don't know the legal part of it. But what I can tell you is that the only fund that can share money with anybody would be your general fund.
Oh, yeah.
Your water funds can't do that. And so that's what's prohibiting less than an arms-length transaction in this sale.
Yeah, we don't disagree about that, we disagree about the value, right?
Agreed. Well, they're having it appraised.
Yeah.
I don't know what the value is, I'm not...
Because we clearly did that. It wasn't the Lear deal, so was there any enterprise? Yes, okay. So there were stormwater funds involved in the purchase of that property out there. We purchased that with some, we, there you go. So the Lear piece, we purchased that with water funds and stormwater funds and different things because we were going to build a public works facility out there. Okay, right?
He says Lear. Is it Compass Point?
Compass Point, sorry.
Okay.
So we purchased that for whatever, you know, and we had offers on the table for $14 million for that piece of property, you know, the bona fide offers. And we chose not to do that. We chose to give it to somebody else because it provided more value and they were going to do some, you know, bring more stuff to the city with that package. So there's an ironclad example where we, you know, changed the value. So maybe there's room. And, and you know, the other example, of course, right, Sumner, like say they took their sewer water funds and purchased a place that became a golf course. You probably know that one, right? Yay, okay? Because they were going to spread the manure out there or whatever at one point in time and/or used it and stuff like this. So they had Sumner Meadows, yeah. So they sold that piece of property eventually to a bunch of developers for a whole lot of money. And I'm real sure that they put 100% of that money back into their sewer system, right? Yeah, no, you know, that, so it can be, I'm confident that...
I don't work for them. But I'd be curious, so in the same...
Get around the Compass Point.
I see what you're saying, yeah. So I see what you're saying, they sold it for less, okay. Due to a benefit of what the council believed to be a benefit to the city. What would the benefit be if, say, and I have no idea what the...
These guys are able to build all their parks and rec?
No, I mean, what would the benefit be for the water fund to sell that at, say, $3 million instead of the $5 million they could to the general fund when the general fund couldn't afford to pay for it? What would be the benefit?
We did it with the Compass Point piece, same thing, same idea. They brought a bunch of like jobs and building and infrastructure pieces that they were going to put on the ground that we didn't have to pay for, you know? So, but I don't know, you know?
Yeah, that's a question for legal.
I don't, I don't think any of that has anything to do with the MOU, really, in my mind, because I think the MOU is structured in such a way that it doesn't guarantee anything. It just says, this is what we want to do, this is, you know, the, I don't know.
Yeah, I completely agree. We can do an MOU if this, then that with a couple of different options, right? And that we are working together towards something and we know what that is. Just particularly talking about the Reed piece. There should be a separate, and then there will be in the future, I believe, a separate negotiation in regards to the rec program, right? Because you're right, that is completely separate. Those are two separate discussions and how we move forward with that. We have no idea what that's going to be. I believe the ILA from the school districts is coming up next week for us to vote on and move forward, but Chuck has made it very clear that there will not be another ILA probably next year. So we have to come up with something that we're able to do. The school district does not seem to be interested in working through that process with us again and they don't want any part of it, is what my understanding from Chuck is. So with that, we have to do something, so, but that'll be, again, that's in the future, right? Councilmember Fuller, then.
Yeah, so question one, I have two questions. So question one is, who do we get to write that MOU as soon as possible? Do we need the attorney to do that or is that something that comes from the city administrators?
The city is pushing for the city attorney to do that. I've provided them with a stock MOU, like here you go, it's not hard, you can get them off the internet, we do them all the time with, you know, negotiations with the police department or with any of the unions or whatnot. This is not something that's new, right? So it's not that hard. She, I think she's actually got one that's almost ready to go, is my understanding as well, she probably has it done in an hour.
And then my second question is, as far as annexing property, oh, do you need to answer that first?
No, I was going to let you know that I will speak with John tonight or tomorrow and let him know that this is your interest so that he can refer the matter to Jennifer. I know that John is at conference rest this week and he's on vacation next week, so I'll make sure to reach out to him so he knows to bring this forward for you.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
And then, so then my second question, yeah, thank you. My second question is, as far as annexing, I know that there used to be some kind of a, for properties that are east of 214th and 218th, that they can't be annexed for a certain amount of years, so has that been, has that expired?
So in regards to this property, it's my understanding that if it is purchased by the general fund and becomes a park, then it can be annexed.
Okay, great.
Yeah, because we did ask John about that, kind of challenged him a little bit, because I was a little bit worried about that. I don't think that's a deal stopper either way, but it sounds pretty straightforward, because municipal purposes, there is a state law that allows for municipal purposes and annexation.
That's what I was just going to add on, right there, is we have to make sure that it can be used for municipal purposes, which-[1685.91]